Good evening, the June 3rd or June 5th meeting of the Martin County Board of Education is called to order. All please rise and pledge allegiance and dedication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great vote for which it stands, on my nation, on my God, in the physical, with the great we just trust our own.
Thank you. This is Frank. Father God, thank you so much for this opportunity that we have to come together and discuss the business of our schools. Father, we pray that you will be with us tonight as we do this. May all that we do be for the betterment of our schools, the betterment of our students, for our teachers, our staff, and our community. We pray all this in your son's name.
I realize that a lot of folks saw Mr. Scott was here earlier, but he had to go back to work. He has joined us online as he is traveling back. He's got a couple of store resets to do tonight, so he's got a busy night. So with that said, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Now a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. And...
Mr. Heath, I would like to move that we move the Martin County, I mean, excuse me, the Martin Community College Board of Trustees up on the agenda. As we know, Mr. Scott is close by and he could actually be a part of this by phone.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move the Martin Community College Board of Trustees vote. Where did you want to move it to?
Just to the beginning of the meeting. If we can move it to the first part of our meeting.
Before I have your recognition.
Yeah. I would prefer to go ahead and do it now, but if we need to wait, I mean, it's...
Okay. Is there any problem? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to move the College Board of Trustees vote to the next item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we will go ahead and take that. I skipped right over the approval of the agenda. So with that change to the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
All right. So the first item will be the Martin County Community College Board of Trustees. We've all seen our previous representative there, Helen Davis, passed some time back, and she served us both as a teacher and a principal and as our representative at the community college for many years, and we miss her. The floor is open to nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Matthew Sessons, the owner of the Chrysler Dodge Jeep dealership here in Williamson. I think Mr. Sessons would be a fit to the board there due to his auto mechanics program that we have there and his love of our community and his support of our community.
Are there any other nominations?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Keisha Manson, who's a former educator and a former Martin County School Board member.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Do you know what ours would be interested?
Not that, just thank you, but not at this time.
All right, we have two nominees, Matthew Sessons and Keisha Manson. I'm going to ask for a raised hand vote on this. Those in favor of Matthew Sessons being represented on the college board, please raise your hand.
I vote for Matthew, Chair.
Okay.
Three for Matthew. All those for Keisha Manson. All those for Keisha Manson. Okay. It's two. So we have three votes for Matthew Sessons, two votes for Keisha Manson. So I guess it's Matthew Sessons.
Thank you.
All right. Recognizations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have several recognitions of exciting, good stuff that's going on, which is my favorite part for yet. So Dr. White and Hugh and Mr. Heath would like to join us. Our first up tonight is the elementary school winner, Battle of the Books team from E.J. Hayes would join us. E.J. Hayes took the district title, finished second place in the regional that was on April 18th at Northwood High School. So they were second out of 11 teams. And our team members are Mr. Nicholas Leary, Ms. Rivers Turner, Will Saunders, Aubrey Lawrence, Olivia Smith, and Emma Edmonds, coaches Ms. Joanne Wall and Ms. Sheila Tullow. Y'all come over here together and we'll take a picture. Got me, Passy, thank you. This way, Ms. Passy. Very good. Thank you, E.J. Hayes, Battle of the Books. And keep it... And we're going to keep it at E.J. Hayes, asking the Math Count's team to join us. I'm sorry, come on, E.J. Hayes, I got to back up after that one. That's you, the right one. Okay, the Math Count District winner, coaches Ms. Emma Hardison, Ms. Stephanie Hardison, and the team is Ryland Moore, Will Saunders, Nicholas Leary, DeRoz Chalot Twala, Olivia Smith, Lily Ensco, Emma Edmonds, Auburn Stanton. And first place individual score was Ryland Moore. And third place individual score also from Hayes was Mr. Will Saunders. All right, great job everybody. Next up, we have the Middle School Battle of the Books team from South Creek Middle School. This year's Battle of the Books season began on March 1st, and it was an in-county showdown with South Creek taking it. Ms. Billy Vanderpoort coaches the South Creek team. And team members are Tanisha James, Kalani Kiana, I know I said that wrong, I'm sorry, Lonnie Lee, Allison Kep, Ramis, Pina, Charaz, Mari Gonzalez, Justin Rayner, and Ashley Torres. Next up, we have a couple of teachers who have achieved some very special things. First off, are the ladies who achieved their AIG certifications. Ms. Christie Gardner, Ms. Dawn Hardison, and Ms. Shina Sutton cannot be with us tonight. So if Ms. Gardner and Ms. Hardison could join us. These ladies were, I believe it was posted, over a year, ladies? Two. Two years. Two years to accomplish this, and this allows and adds AIG to their certification and all of that benefit our students. And for that, we are very grateful. Sorry. All right, that's for Ms. Christie. And Ms. Hardison. Congratulations, ladies, job well done. Next up, we'd like to ask our National Board Certified Teachers to come up. Ms. Paige Hardison, our principal intern at Jamesville Elementary. Ms. Kobe Briggins, Ms. Amy Marsanti. And Ms. Hardison is a newly achieved certification. And Ms. Marsanti and Ms. Briggins were renewing theirs. I love having to talk. Next up, Mr. William Briggins from here at the Innovation Campus. Mr. Briggins is our esteemed and advanced manufacturing instructor here at the campus, and he has been selected to participate in the prestigious Kenan Fellows Program for Teacher Leadership. The program provides teachers with work-based professional learning experiences that empower them to build education, industry partnerships in their community. Mr. Briggins' focus will be on clean energy and his host is Martin Community College. Thank you. All right, and last and certainly not least, could the members of the Riverside High School tennis team and their coaches join us? This team and their fabulous coaches had a season to remember and then some. She was proud every match and went on to be the state runner-up for the 1A title this year. We are extremely proud of the whole of them. And thank you to the transfer media for their leadership and for having such a great... Can I scoot down a little bit? There we go. Great job, thank you. All right, now I'm going to turn to Mr. Jim Ward for our CTE celebration tonight.
Good evening, thank you. As you know, with CTE, a lot of our students are working toward obtaining credentialing. And as you know, there are many benefits to obtaining credentialing. This gives them proof of a documented set of skills and that are more marketable to the employment arena. Credentialing offers students authentic evidence of skill attainment that is relevant to careers and for them to continue their education. As you know, CTE programs are a major contributor to Martin County schools' skilled labor workforce. Labor pools with specific technical skills are able to attract new businesses to our region and keep our businesses that are currently here going and moving forward. It is Martin County's continued goal on our CTE department to always work towards the strive for giving our students more credentialing opportunities. And so tonight, we have broken our credentialing into major categories. To give you a quick overview, in the spring, we had 171 individual credentials obtained with our students here tonight and were earned by 96 different students. In the fall semester, we had 149 individual credentials earned with 117 individual students, which gave us a total for 320 credentials earned this year by 213 different students. First up is the Adobe Academy Certificate Credential Award led by Ms. Bernetta Griffin. Ms. Griffin has done an outstanding job with her students this year because we went from last year, "Hey, Ms. Griffin, what do you think about this Adobe thing?" to, "Hey, she's going to teach Adobe." And she has had tremendous success, and it's due to the hard work of her students and also her hard work and her tenacity in getting students through that program. But these students have earned credentials in Photoshop and Illustrator, and they've done an outstanding job. So let's get these students around the block. Next up is a program that is new to us this year at Martin County schools, and it's called Advanced Manufacturing Drone Technology. And our leader is Mr. William Briggins, who's also been recognized tonight as a Kenan Fellow. He is a very innovative teacher, and when he came in, the sky has been the limit. He has worked with his students this year to obtain credentialing in three major areas. First off is the Manufacturing Skills Standard Council Certified Production Technician. Also, he has students earn the OSHA 10-Hour Certification in Manufacturing, which is required now by all industries before they enter it. And also with the drone technology, he has helped work with our students to get work on their FAA license, Federal Aviation Administration, that certification. So he's done an outstanding job this year, plus he gets to play with the drones, which always makes him really good. So let's get these kids around the block. And as you can see, the reason they're hopping in line again is these are some of our students that obtained multiple credentialings. So it's not only something for their teacher, but them for their tenacity and going to work. Our next one up is our Agriculture Education, which includes several different areas led by Ms. Heather Smith and Mr. Mike Bennett. Ms. Smith is new to us this year, and she's handling our Animal Science and Biotech areas. And Mr. Bennett is one of our four seasoned teachers, and his area is mechanics and metal fabrication. The students you have before you tonight are in the Youth Quality Care of Animals, the Beef Quality Insurance, and the OSHA 10-Hour Agriculture Certification, which we had 21 students in that category alone, along with the Animal Science. So they've done an outstanding job. These students have worked hard, and especially in some new and coming industries for us, and with the 10-Hour OSHA Certification that they can take to any business to be marketable. So let's get these students around the block.
Ms. Ward.
Yes, ma'am.
The ages of these students, are they freshmen, sophomore?
All of them. Yes, ma'am, nine.
All.
All grade levels. Yes, ma'am. What we worked with as we get ready to call the next group and say come on in, we've worked with all grade levels to get them. So whatever course they're in, no matter what grade level they're in.
Let them go higher, miss.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. So tonight, we have, as part of our dynamic duo for food and culinary, we have Ms. Hale with us from South Creek, and of course, Ms. Joyner from Riverside. And they worked very hard this year on the Serve Safe certifications, and there's two of them. There's Serve Safe Food Protection Manager and Serve Safe Food Handler. And Ms. Hale has done an outstanding job with her South Creek students, really pushing them through and making them successful, just like Ms. Joyner and Ms. Hardison at Riverside. But these are both industry-ready certifications, and they are ready to go and ready to go to work that they can choose to in that area. So let's please give them a round of applause.
And finally, our next group up is our Health Sciences group. Ms. Ward is bringing that group in, and also Ms. Rebels is here with them this evening. This is another area that we've always had a strong program, but they have really expanded it this year and really stepped up with what they've done. And under our Health Sciences, these students have also qualified in the following categories, which is First Aid, Prevent Blindness, Stop the Lead, the OSHA 10-Hour Healthcare Certification, CPR Certification, and we also have Nurses Aid Training Program Level One students, and they're also scheduled to take their CNA certification later this month, which is a big deal. So not only will they earn these certifications, but they're going out to get their CNA and be able to hit the world with work if they choose to do so. So, but this has been a testament to Ms. Rebels and Ms. Ward and the things that they have done this year. And as I finish up with this group, I'd also like a special thank you to Ms. Kristen Berry. She has worked very hard. She has turned into having to be a big air traffic controller because all of these credentialing and all the packets and everything that has to be done by the teachers has to go through her first to get it ordered and get it taken care of. And that has, as you can see by, you know, helped produce over 320 of these this year. That has taken some work and some time and some effort. So, you know, like not only with the Health Science, without Ms. Kristen Berry's hard work, we wouldn't be here with this also tonight. So let's get the Health Science round the block.
Hey, the boot camp.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody who got the board denied. And thank you to all the teachers and instructors. All righty, I think we're ready to move on. We'll move into the information items, the ESAR fund review.
Good evening, Ward. Wanted to provide you with an update as we get close to the end of the fiscal year in regards to our ESAR funding. ESAR 2 funding will expire September 30th, and while I had originally thought we would be done by June 30th, that is not going to be the case, but we will be done by July 31st. So we are scheduled to have that money spent and done by the deadline of September 30th. The one piece that we've got left are the cameras, and Mr. Ward says they're working diligently in the time the company is on weekends, nights, whenever the facilities are available, his team's coming in and opening up so they can get stuff and stuff. It's just a big process. Moving on to ESAR 3, those funds will not expire until next September. And there's a report attached. And as Dr. White has come in and has looked at, you know, what some of our plans are and what some of her plans are and what some of the, what she's identified as needs in her insight for Dr. White tour, as well as her school tours during the day with faculty and staff, we've increased some professional development. We have got a big line item in there for new curriculum resources and development. And part of that development is to do some work over the summer, and so we would need to pay some teachers to come in and do some of that work, and then have some consultants as well to help to train, do professional development with those new resources. As you've heard, the one-to-one initiative is big, and so we want to make sure we have all of the devices that we need for that, so we've increased that line item. And again, HVAC systems, as we're all aware, because of the delay in awarding that bid for our last round of HVAC projects, it went up in that short amount of time. And so we bumped that up just a little bit so that we'll have sufficient funds to finish out what was the original intent for updating our HVAC projects. Are there any questions? I do want to let you know that the county manager reached out to me about getting this update, and I will send this to him tomorrow, but I wanted to respect this board and make sure they saw this first. So I will be sending him these two reports tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly.
Thank you.
Next item is COVID status, Dr. Monroe.
Good afternoon, more members of the House. Chair Pete, Vice Chair, Ms. Purvis, you have before you the report of reportable cases that happened by campus for the month of May in Martin County schools as we closed out school year. You see, we only had two cases in students and two cases with staff members, and those are at different times. As I have been preparing for, May 11th is when they shut down the COVID emergency piece. And so the information that you also have in your packet is from Wes Gray, who has provided for you what they are monitoring, respiratory, RSD. So you have that particular data that they are continuing to monitor. You should also have in your packet there is the guidelines that our school nurses were operating on prior to COVID and what we have vetted and sent back through our Health Department, who is our authority source for all health, public health issues, that what we will communicate with parents in the upcoming school year with regard to symptoms and when students should stay home. Because many of these symptoms will mimic or have similar symptoms as with COVID, we are preparing ourselves to make sure that we can respond to the various issues that may come up as we prepare going into the next school year without all the restrictions and things that were put in place during the years ago. That concludes the report for COVID updates for Martin County.
Thank you, Dr. Monroe. And we'll move into the action part of our agenda of the school building capital fund application. Ms. Tilly again?
Yes, sir. This is the standard... There we go. Thank you. This is the debt payment for Riverside High School. This is our 12th of 15 payments that will be done in 2026. Mr. Heath, if you don't mind, you emailed me a question about this, and I'd like to just share in case anybody else had that same concern. But in the application, if you will look down at the bottom, it says matching funds of $1 of local funds for every $3 of state funds. And Mr. Heath's question was, are the numbers in the right column? Because it looks like it's $3 of local money to $1 of state money. We're just, we're overmatching. I mean, we are, the county pays for the principal, and we're just using the state funds to basically pay for the interest. So that's why it looks like that. So the form is correct, but that is why it looks a little different. So we, and we typically bring these applications to the Board of Education first and then send it through, send it to the county. But when I contacted the county, they had a meeting scheduled on May 31st and agreed to put it on their agenda so we could, for time purposes, get it in to TPI before the end of the fiscal year. So the counties already approved this, it's just waiting your approval.
All righty. Need a motion to approve the application for public school building capital fund. So moved and seconded to approve the application for public school capital building fund. All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is conversion of new non-certified positions to hourly wages. Ms. Tilly and Dr. Melton.
Good evening. Ms. Tilly and I wanted to bring up to the board the conversion of our new non-certified staff to hourly wages. This would be for anyone that's non-certified. This would be for anyone that's non-certified and hired after June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-three. And the reason that we're suggesting this is that right now, we are currently paying all of our non-certified staff on the same salary schedule that we pay our teachers on. And by law, we are um, mandated to pay, to prepay our teachers. So we're prepaying them for a half a month of employment before they actually work that time. We are treating our sta, our certified staff as if they have a salary. And as you'll remember, there are a lot of times our non-certified, I'm sorry, our non-certified staff, there are a lot of times our non-certified staff have questions about their checks because they have docs in their check. They have for, for several things. If they don't work a day during the um, month, for example, if there's a workday that they're not scheduled to work on, then they get a doc in their check. And it makes it very difficult for them to understand exactly why they have that doc. And then they also don't have a good understanding on a month-to-month basis of what they're going to make. We are proposing that for anybody hired after twen, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, that we pay them at an hourly rate and we pay them as they work.
Yeah. And we, we have a lot of questions on a monthly basis, especially um, when they drive a bus because they've, they've been paid for time on their, their, on their TA job. And then when they drive a bus, we're having to reduce their TA job and they give a bus time. And even though the bus rate is higher than their TA job, they think that, that we're taking something from them and, and it looks that way because it's a doc. And so I think it would make it easier for them that bus is an hourly job paid after the fact. And I think it would make it easier for them to understand their paychecks if their TA job was paid the same way. And as Dr. Bowen mentioned, this would just be for um, new classified, non-certified staff coming in after uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Currently, because of the way we prepaid, we have some um, classified staff right now that owe us upwards of three thousand dollars in back pay. Because to be honest, I don't think, think people think about that they've been prepaid. They come in, you know, the first of August and they're being paid through mid-September. And so they forget about that. And I, I just think it would be, to be completely honest with you, it would be a lot easier on my staff, but I honestly think it would be uh, easier on our employees to better understand how and why they're paid what they're paid.
Why can't we do our TAs that way? Not just the new ones?
We could do that. And if you remember, last year, we made a suggestion that we use some of our ESAR funding to prefront um, our teacher assistants with a um, not a bonus, but a, I guess it would be a bonus, um, a thousand dollar bonus to offset that initial. Because what it would mean is they receive their last paycheck May thirtieth. And they would typically, coming back, get a paycheck for an entire month at the end of August. So if we changed it, they wouldn't get that entire paycheck. They would only get through whatever date in August we paid.
Yeah, it would be very, it's not, it would be very minimal. And um, even, it would be really September-ish before they get like a full paycheck. So it's a timing.
Right. So we were going to use the thousand dollars to, that they each got, to offset some of that cost, some of what they would not receive in August. So they would get that bonus in August instead. And at that time, the board did not want to move forward with that. It would, if we put everybody on that schedule, it would be easier for everyone, I think, to understand um, what they're receiving. And as far as them getting in a situation where they owe money, um, we've had some people who left before, they just, they resigned or there's something that's come up and they are not finishing out the year with us. Or they did not have sick leave and they had to be out sick. And that's why they ended up owing us money. And that's hard to come up with when you find out that you owe nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
But that's the way it is now, not with the new people.
With the, with the new people moving forward.
That would never happen.
That would not happen, correct.
Do you think we should go on and do the ESAR money and fix it, put all the non-certified staff on this schedule?
So one concern that we have with that is I want to give all of our staff time to prepare for that.
Right.
So we actually, we're going to bring that back to the board in August to do for the following school year because I want our employees to have time to know that they're not going to get that check in August. So if we voted on this later in August, then it would give our non-certified staff time throughout the year to save accordingly. Absolutely. It is, um, senior team has discussed it and we do want to bring this back to the board in August for all employees for the following school year so that we give all our employees time to prepare.
The teachers had to do this in the past one time. We had a, a transition and it was hard, I remember, but okay, well, at least we're not going to let go of it altogether for everybody.
No, ma'am. We wanted to move forward with our new hires, but we also want to ensure our current hires have adequate time to prepare.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I need a motion on the conversion of new non-certified positions to hourly wages.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the conversion of new certif, non-certified positions to hourly wages. All in favor say aye. Opposed, aye. Thank you. Next item is the superintendent contract amendment. Well, we'll let you sit down after.
I'm sure I can start the show right now. I've been going back to her as soon as I heard you say dinner.
You're very popular.
In renewing Dr. White's contract, as we were preparing to set her up for payroll, um, I had some concerns about her start date not matching her actual start date and that that might have caused us some issues as we get into um, audit and monitoring season and all that. So I reached out to our auditors and they said yes. So I reached out to Brandon and um, he has graciously uh, prepared an amendment so that we now, her contract will actually state um, her start date of May ninth, which makes me happy and keeps us out of trouble without it. So um, we just need approval of that, just to, and I know you guys agreed to it because I even said, you know, they approved her in open session to start on that day and he's like, yeah, but the contract written needs to say that, which is what I thought, but got confirmation.
Alright, I need a motion to approve the contract amendment to show the starting date of May ninth for Dr. White.
Move to approve the superintendent contract amendment.
And second.
Moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's contract amendment. All in favor say aye. Opposed, aye. Thank you, Ms. Tilly.
I think I'm done, thank you.
Come back in, Karen. Give the money, Karen.
Early college proposal.
Yes, good evening, school board. So I've had the pleasure over the last several weeks of being in the community, being at our schools and really having an opportunity to digest where we are, what we need, and most importantly, what our children need. And something that's come to the forefront of basically every conversation is the need to expand our early college opportunities. We want every child in Martin County schools to have the opportunity and the clear pathway to take college courses while in high school, whether they're working towards that two-year associate's degree or they want to get as many college classes as they possibly can and they feel appropriate for them uh, before moving into that higher education. So what we would like to do is begin the work of expanding our early college course options for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, as well as developing our early college high school pathways for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We, this year, currently, we have one student to graduate with a two-year degree. It is my goal, my passion, and something that I am assuring that we're going to do if the board approves, that we want to increase that number tremendously um, as we move forward. We want more children to have the option to graduate with their associate's degree. Uh, currently, we are beginning the work to refine course options within our high schools and with Martin Community College to ensure those greater opportunities. So tonight, school board, we are asking for you to be, we are asking for permission to begin this work and propose that we move forward with expanding our early college opportunities into twenty-three, twenty-four school year and begin the process of implementing an early college high school for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Any questions? How about these other colleges?
So the partnership with the community college is free. Uh, we already have the perfect setup at the Innovation Campus. So what we need to look at is, we do need to expand our general education uh, course offerings at the Innovation Campus, but that also is we need to look at what we're offering well, uh, where. So I can't say a specific cost, um, but I can tell you that I don't believe we can afford not to do it.
Okay. I, I was thinking in the past when we, when the, I wasn't on board, but when it was not um, chosen to do, I thought it was a big cost.
No. There's no, there's no big cost associated, and maybe at that time there was, possibly at that time we had left and placed.
Well, why didn't, why wasn't it done?
It is free to work with our community college. The only cost that we may incur is, like I said, as we move towards having staff on the campus here, and I'm talking in the future, to be able to offer those core classes for our students. In addition to um, working with Martin Community College or other community colleges as well as Martin Community College to offer frankly, whatever options our children want, we are on a goldmine. We have Martin Community, we have Beaufort Community, we have Edgecombe Community, we have Pitt Community. We are in a position to give our children whatever they desire, whatever career goals they have, and I'm ready to start working on it with the board's permission.
Need a motion on the early college proposal.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Erlich College proposal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Thank you. Martin County Athletics.
Right again, over the last several weeks, as I've had the opportunity to tour our amazing schools, visit our staff, our families, our children, one thing I've realized is not every child has every opportunity. You're often going to hear me say, every child deserves every opportunity. And our zip code should not determine the opportunities presented to us. But unfortunately, something that I've noticed is that our South Creek children do not currently receive the same opportunities as our Riverside children. Part of the reason uh, for that, and this is specifically talking about athletics at this time, part of the reason is that they do have smaller student numbers, which means that they don't always have enough children to create a team. So if there's two or three children that want to play basketball, they don't have a basketball team because there's not enough to play the game. Also, sometimes it's difficult to find coaches, um, just like in today's times, it's difficult to find teachers at times. So one thing I would like for us to consider this evening is playing athletics as Martin County schools. It's time for Martin County to come together as one team and as one family. We are better together. By doing this, we could offer every child every opportunity. Doesn't matter what high school you go to, you will have the opportunity to play every sport offered. The perfect example is our tennis team. We had state championship tennis at Riverside High School. Our South Creek kids never got the opportunity to play. We had state championship golf at Riverside High School. My South Creek kids did not get the opportunity to play. I want every child to have every opportunity. We have reached out to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association as well as the Department of Public Instruction who supervised the middle school athletics, and we are going to do this. However, uh, just to be transparent, I did ask if, for example, we had enough to play basketball, but not enough to play soccer, could we combine some sports? Because my goal is that every child gets the opportunity. The answer is no. We have to go all or nothing. And so um, tonight, I think we need to consider every child, every opportunity, and move to playing athletics as Martin County schools. Uh, we will provide transportation for all students to and from their home school um, for practices as well as games. So transportation will not be an issue. I'm asking the board this evening to consider a motion to play all athletics for middle and high school as Martin County schools beginning in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
What would be the name? I mean, because everybody has their own name as well.
Right. So we are actually going to play as Martin County schools. For this year, we will not play under Knights nor Coopers. We're going to play as one team, one family, and we're Martin County schools. Over the course of the year, uh, Mr. McGill will work with the community, all stakeholders, and we will determine our mascot from there. But that will be a team decision, uh, but for this year, we're Martin, if the board approves.
So like, Hurford County, Gates County.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. When you look at other schools around us that have similar ADM, Hurford plays as Hurford County schools. They have three different high schools in Hurford County, but they play as Hurford County schools. Burtie have multiple high schools, they play as Burtie County schools. And it just, it makes sense. You're stronger together, you're better together, and you're able to give more kids an opportunity. So we would play as Martin County schools.
But the middle schools would have their separate teams, right?
So the middle, no, the middle schools would play as Martin County schools as well. And in them, so we would play as Martin County Middle Schools for the middle school and Martin County High Schools for the high school.
But they would stay at the school to practice. Oh, I, I got the impression of the Knights that, so they will have to transport and...
Everybody will play together.
Okay.
Everybody will play together. Mm-hmm. And the great thing about the middle school is you can have multiple teams at the middle school level. So for example, if we had forty or fifty kids that wanted to play volleyball, we don't need to cut forty kids, we need to have multiple teams because every child deserves that opportunity. And some of our students don't have a rec department in their local area. So Robertson Field is not. So those children have never been given the opportunity. You might have an excellent athlete who's never had the opportunity. By combining our teams, we can also have multiple teams. And I have done this previously, I have had uh, children volleyball was a hot sport and we have multiple students. And so we developed multiple teams. We can have as many teams as we'd like. Doesn't, it's not going to be just one team. We have multiple students that want to play, we are going to offer multiple teams. We'll have Team A, Team B, Team C, and Team D if we need to. Um, and when I've done this previously, within one year, we were playing each other for the conference championship because children got a chance. And that's what I want, that's, that's what I'm asking for us to do. So it will also build our program. Right now, we're not even having JV sports in several of our competitions. By doing this and bringing us together, we are going to build our program. We can have multiple teams at the middle school level, which will then feed into multiple teams at the high school level. So we can get back to having JV and varsity versus sometimes struggling to fill one varsity team at one school and having kids who want to play at another school, but not enough to actually play on the team.
Do we even have JV teams anymore here?
There was, I believe there was a couple of sports and I got Mr. McGill in the house too to answer specific questions as well, but for most sports, we do not have JV.
Ms. Carlisle, it just depends on the sport. Like for example, at Riverside High School, they had a JV boys' basketball team. And um, South, they have JV, chili. So some sports have JVs, a lot of them are not.
But we didn't have enough kids to want.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's affecting all our schools, all our schools?
Yes, absolutely. I feel strongly, after talking with the community, talking with staff, all of our stakeholders, we're better together. When you look around us, other schools that have a similar ADM as we do, they all play as one school system, not divided schools.
I like the idea of us doing it, being a four, we're together.
Yes, yes, one family.
Okay, any other questions? And I need a motion relating to the, how, the Martin County schools play as Martin County schools rather than Riverside and South Creek.
I need to approve the Martin County Athletics.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the Martin County Athletics proposal. All in favor say aye. Opposed, aye. Thank you. That passes as well. That passes as well.
Mr. Scott, you're against? Your four, okay. Is that what you're gonna ask?
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education into closed session pursuant to advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318. Dot eleven A one and A six to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute 115C-319 and to consider matters related to initial employment of a new professional employee. The Board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot eleven A three to consult with the Board's attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege to consider student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143 dot three eighteen dot eleven A one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty USC one two three two G and North Carolina General Statute 115C dash four zero two. The Board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143 dash three eighteen dot eleven A five.
We have a motion, is there a second? So have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, daye. Closed session granted. I'd like to thank you everybody.
Go through the fence, park beside the gym or behind it. I'm going behind it. Left back door. Alrighty, need a motion to approve personnel as presented in closed session.
So move second.
Have a motion and a second to approve personnel report as presented in closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close day. Personnel is approved. Need a motion relating to the closed session minutes.
Move to approve the closed session minutes and keep them closed.
Second. Have a motion to approve the closed session minutes and to keep them closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close day. That passes you quick. Right, that brings us to the superintendent report.
Thank you Chairman Heath. I just wanted to start this report each month to give this report to our staff, to the board, and to our community about the great things happening in our schools. There are amazing things happening in Martin County schools and it's time for us to shout those from the rooftops. And so let's talk about the happenings in May in Martin County schools. First of all, we started with our teacher and staff appreciation weeks. Of course, we started the month, this is a national recognition of all of our teachers and staff, but we actually decided that we were going to continue this across several weeks because we wanted our staff to know that we don't just appreciate you one week of the year, we appreciate you every day of all year. I wanted to give another special thank you to our community sponsors who jumped in, made donations, and we were able to do gift cards and Chamber of Commerce gift certificates for our staff. We did numerous drawings every single day and our staff thoroughly enjoyed it. The Martin County Press Patrol is scheduled later this week to actually make the deliveries to the schools of these awards for our staff. So thank you again to all of our community sponsors. Also this month, we were blessed to see our seniors in action during the senior walk. Both our South Creek seniors as well as our Riverside seniors walked the halls of their previous schools. As students and staff cheered them on, they walked the halls and just had kind of a final time in those schools. And what a great opportunity for children to look up to and see where they're going to be in the coming years. Also, we want to celebrate some amazing athletic accomplishments. Several things have happened throughout this month. You saw our tennis team tonight, what an accomplishment. State championship runner-up. This is amazing, okay? Many people don't realize, but most of these young men started playing tennis in ninth grade. There's not a middle school tennis team, okay? So these young men started playing in ninth grade. Many other students from across the state, particularly in private or charter schools, they start taking lessons at a very young age. So they've been playing their whole life. These men came in here, these young men, and actually were state champion, runner-up after only starting in ninth grade, and that is just something so special. And I'm very thankful for the coaches that poured into them and just wanted to give another special shout-out to those young men because that is truly a special accomplishment. We also have state championship golf at Riverside High School. Wanted to give a shout-out to Thomas Wynn and Trenton Cowan. Trenton competed at the state championship and represented us very, very well and we're proud of him. Our track and field, we had several students, numerous students who participated at the state championship meet. We had numerous students who actually ended up finishing in the top three, so awesome job to that. Our Riverside High School softball team made it to the third round of the state playoffs and we wanted to recognize that awesome accomplishment as well. Continuing with our athletics, we have our very own student from Williamson High School who just signed with the Green Bay Packers. So if you're wondering if our school system can provide you the opportunity to play beyond high school, that is a yes and an affirmative yes. Congratulations to Mr. Bonds who's just signed with the Green Bay Packers. We are so proud of you and if you're listening, we look forward to you coming back and meeting with our students and telling them all about your success and how they can find that same success. We're so proud of you. Continuing, can you play beyond Martin County schools? Yes, you can. Riverside High School just had Taquan Bunch who is a senior signed to run track with Barton College. So he had his signing ceremony this month as well and will be running track at Barton College. So many awesome athletic opportunities in Martin County schools for our students to just have a wonderful experience and then have opportunities beyond their high school or their K-12 school experience. So, so blessed with the great athletic program. Moving on, we have more than just the athletics. Let's take a look at our awesome arts program. This month I was able to attend the Martin County Schools Blue Ribbon Art Show where numerous students from grades kindergarten all the way through grade 12 were recognized for their achievement. And you see here in this picture, so many of our students were so proud. Every student has a gift and a talent and it's our job to help them discover just what that is. So this was a great opportunity, some beautiful artwork and love the opportunity to recognize our students. Moving on, all of our schools in middle and high school hosted band concerts this month. I attended several of them and they were absolutely outstanding. One of the concerts, the Riverside concert was joint, it was the middle school and high school and it also had an art expo. So the students' art was also on display, the concerts were simply outstanding. And to be able to pull that off so quickly after just coming off of MPA in March, so they just had that huge competition at Martin County High School where they played for the judges and did a stellar job, received a superior by the way, and then turned around and presented all different music just a couple of months later. So shout-out to our arts department. Moving along, I wanted to recognize our child nutrition workers. It takes every single person in Martin County schools to create the absolute best for our children. This month we had our health inspections and every single one of them had stellar health grades. And so I just wanted to bring that to the community's attention to give a shout-out to our amazing child nutrition workers. Moving on, our school system was featured not once but twice on Channel 9 this month. One time for the Insight for Dr. White Tours which we'll talk about in a moment, but a second time, they featured our ad program at the Innovation Campus. They actually came out to the school, it was a wonderful article and you can still find that on the WNCT Channel 9 page. Awesome job showcasing the amazing opportunities right here at the Innovation Campus for our students. Wanted to give a shout-out to the Williamson Fire Rescue and EMS. They hosted, members of the Fire Rescue and EMS went to our schools this month, particularly EJ Hayes, this is where their pictures are from, and they focused on bike safety, making sure that students know how to be safe on their bicycles this summer, and they all received a bike helmet as part of this amazing program. So we are so thankful for that partnership and appreciate their work to help ensure our students are safe during the summer month. Moving along, our teachers of excellence were recognized this month. We want to give a shout-out to all of our teachers of excellence representing each school. They are all stellar, they are all fantastic. But a special shout-out to Constance Comby who is our Martin County Schools District Teacher of the Year. We're very blessed by her and thankful to have her in our school system and look forward to her representing us well in the regional competition. Alright, moving along, I was on the road this month. Went from one end of the family to another. We hosted Insight for Dr. White Tours in Jamesville here at the Innovation Campus at Riverside High School and at South Creek Middle High School. We also hosted these for all staff members. So I went into every single school and met with every single staff member just to find out what's working and in what areas we need to better our best. So I wanted to kind of go over some of the things that we learned from our Insight Tours and what are our next steps going to be? Because as we get people's voice, we want to make sure that we're doing something with it. So if there's areas that we need to better our best, we're prepared to do that. If it's broken, we're going to fix it. If we don't have it, we're going to build it. So let's talk about what our next steps will be. First of all, in our community, the early college expansion and the need for greater pathways for our students came up numerous times. And the board acted on that tonight and did approve for us to move forward with the expansion of our early college pathways for all of our students to ensure every child gets every opportunity. So therefore, we have already started the work to schedule meetings with Martin Community College, look at our pathways, and ensure that our eighth grade families are well-planned to take advantage of this opportunity. Every child in Martin County schools will have the opportunity to graduate with a two-year degree. And if that is not the right decision for a particular child, they will have the opportunity to take as many high college courses as is appropriate for that child. We are working on those pathways now. We are also working to go one-on-one in the fall. Some of our schools are further along with this, but one thing that came out was the need to ensure that all of our students have devices within all of our schools. Again, some are closer than others, but in the fall, all students will have a one-to-one device that will be theirs full-time. We will be working on the replenishment plans, what exactly that will look like, more information will come. In addition, some of the community's concerns expressed the need for an alternative learning environment. That is in place for next school year, we will have an alternative learning environment for next year. It will be held separately from the regular student body and we will provide support for students who need more. and we will provide support for students who need more. Alternative learning isn't just for students who have behavior problems. It's for students that may have social emotional issues. It's for students that just need more or they just need different. And we are excited to be able to offer our students that opportunity for the coming school year. And looking at some staff feedback, so most of that feedback, those are our action items for the things that I got from our community meetings. And now looking at our action items for the things from our staff, resources. Our staff want more resources. They want core resources, they want tier-two resources, and we are working on that. We would like to bring staff, you heard Ms. Tilly mention tonight that I want to bring staff in this summer. This is part of that work. They want resources, so we're currently vetting those and we'll bring in some options for them this summer to choose from to ensure that every teacher in Martin County schools has what they need to help our children be successful. Professional development, our teachers want professional development that they need, that they request. They want focus on standards-aligned support. They want support with PBIS, they want support with MTSS, they want support with differentiation, with instructional technology and with the resources. And so we are going to be revamping our professional development plan next year to ensure that it's personalized for our staff and exactly what they need. Some of our PD this year was online. Next year, we're going to be moving to a very personalized professional development format with more live instruction based on exactly what our teachers request and data demonstrates the need for. Also, our, our teachers expressed some concern with the payday being so late in the month and this came up multiple times where they asked if we could pay earlier during the month. Ms. Tilly actually had already brought that concern to me as well. There are several things that finance has to do after the payroll is finalized to close out that month. So it was a staff concern, Ms. Tilly had the concern. So we are going to be moving our payday to the 25th of each month, which will be earlier for staff as requested and it will also meet the needs of finance as they have requested. That concludes, yes?
That will start in July.
That will start July, yes. July 25th will be our first new payday. Yes ma'am. All right, and then we have here, this will be published online for our families. Each month when I do a report, I will share this online so that fam, that was actually a request also in our Insight for Dr. White meetings. They wanted to, to know the follow-up from those meetings and how we would be addressing different things in the school system. So every month when I give these reports, I will also post this online. Therefore, I have added all the awards programs that will be coming up this week. I feel that will be a benefit for our families so that they can organize it, particularly if they have multiple children and across multiple schools, they'll be able to see all the great things happening for the remainder of the school year. Don't forget our graduation ceremonies coming up. Those are also noted here. Riverside High School will be at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday and South Creek will be at 11:30 a.m. We are so looking forward to celebrating our 2023 Martin County Schools graduates. Chairman Heath, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Anybody got any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn with the chair.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close day.